Welcome to the regular meeting for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education on Monday, July 27, 2020. We'll call to order a roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Looks like he just fell off.
I'll go through the role here. Ms. Autry?
President.
Mr. Bravo?
Here.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Here.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Here.
And we know Mr. Alexander was on, so let's maybe wait just a moment to see if he's able to rejoin us. I'll shoot him a message. All right, is that you, Bruce?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm on the phone for now. I'm gonna keep trying to get on the computer. It keeps picking me off. I don't know why.
Perfect. Do you want to?
So we can go ahead until I can get on the computer.
Okay. Are you good with roll call then, Ryan?
Ryan, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. And for those of you who have joined us, this is our regular meeting of the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for July 27, 2020. We are in order and we have completed our roll call. Thank you for being patient with us as we work through a few minor technology issues. At this time, if everyone that's joining us can please mute their microphones, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. Good. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Good, thank you. Just making sure we haven't lost anyone. Make sure everyone's still there. Okay. At this time, we're going to open it up for community and school reflections. We have a lot on the agenda tonight, so if you can, please make use of the chat and let me know if you'd like to tee up next in line, but I'll open it up either to the first comment or the first hand I see. All right. Going once, going twice. All right. With no community and school reflections, we do have a request to address the board this evening. We have two requests, and we are going to push our technology skills to the limits tonight. I've been told this is gonna work, so I am going to actually join a second Google Meet, and then I will share my screen with you so that you can view the requests, the presenters that we have tonight who have requested to address the board. So we are going to see if this works, and I'm going to ask for your patience for just one moment as I connect to the other Google Meet. All right, Mr. Dodson is connected. I am going to share my screen. All right, Mr. Dodson, thank you for joining us this evening. Just as a reminder, you have three minutes. We'll help you keep time, and we appreciate you being with us this evening. Can everyone see and hear Mr. Dodson?
No.
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 I cannot.
You can't see him either?
No.
All right, let's try this again. All right, can we see each other now?
Patrick, we see that you're trying to show a presentation, but you know, there's nobody on the screen.
Can you see Mr. Dodson now?
Oh, I think I could see. I saw him there for a sec.
All right, it's connecting. And can you see Mr. Dodson?
No.
No, sorry.
Mr. Dodson, can you say something and we can check the audio? All right, well, we're going to stop doing that then, and I will get with Mr. Dodson. We actually had two requests to address the board tonight. So as soon as I stop these shares, we'll follow up on our meeting. I'll get with our IT folks and we'll see if we can't make this work another way. So give me just a moment.
No problem. I'll wait for you. Just bring him.
I have audio there.
Patrick, we, yeah, we, yeah, we had audio there.
Well,
I mean, if he's okay with you speaking without being on video.
Yeah, except for that I did let him go unfortunately because I'm not able to make it work on my end. We talked about it earlier with staff and I thought it was gonna work, but it's not. So we're going to go ahead and move on and then we will come back. For those who are joining us via via our live stream, this is probably a little bit short. So let's move on and we will come back. Just know that we do have two requests to address the board. I'll ask them to either submit their comments or we'll get this turned around for the next board meeting. It was Scott Dodson and Shamus Malik both wanted to discuss public and personal safety for the area around the Dave Marshall Baseball Field in Firestone neighborhood. So we will get their comments.
Councilman Malik may be on the call with a call-in number. Can we pause to see if he's dialed in? Doesn't look like that. Okay, my apologies.
Let's keep moving and we'll come back. If someone's able to figure something out on their end while we're meeting, then we can always come back. At this time, we have no recognitions or communications. We do need approval of the previous meeting minutes for July 13th and July 20th. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Ms. McKittrick, a second by Dr. Akbar. Any comments, questions, or discussion on the meeting? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes, yes.
McKittrick?
Yes, yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yep, 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 yep.
Ms. Autry? Mr. Bravo?
Yes, yes, yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye, aye, aye.
All right, just a quick note. We need 26 people. The meeting invite could have all of those. If you have a second meeting open console and you mute when not on video, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Superintendent's recommendations, personnel?
Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the personnel recommendations presented in categories five through 16.
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Ms. McKittrick, a second from Ms. Mansfield on the personnel recommendations. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry? Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Apology for the interruption again. Mr. Alexander, are you also on a call-in as well as the Google?
I clicked off the call-in. I should be on the regular.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. President, next I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 21.
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. McKittrick and a second by Ms. Mansfield on the consent agenda items. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Ms. McKittrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President. I wish to recommend approval of the business affairs recommendations presented in category 23.
Thank you.
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. McKittrick and a second by Mr. Alexander on the business affairs agenda items. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
Yes, I do.
Yes, Dr. Akbar and then Ms. Autry?
Yes, I would actually ask that the board strikes number 23.28 and discuss that separately.
Okay. And are you asking?
Do we need a second on that?
Yeah, that's my question. Do you need a second?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd be happy to second it then. This is Dr. Akbar.
I'll second.
Great, thank you. All right. All in favors of taming that item on the agenda and removing it from personnel recommendation temporarily, if I'm saying a aye?
Aye.
Any of those?
Aye.
Okay, the remainder of the personnel recommendation stand as recommended. Any other, Ms. Autry, you had a comment or?
Yeah, my question was on item 23.6 through 23.16. So we're spending a significant amount to Corin Press for a program called Teacher Clarity, and I was wondering if we could get any background information on what that professional development entails.
Yes, Mrs. Autry, I believe Kenya Harrington is on senior staff and can address that issue.
Good evening, Board President, Board members. Corwin, through our School Quality Improvement Grant, we've had a partnership with Corwin for the past two years. The focus is on teacher clarity and teacher efficacy. So our 11 buildings that are identified as priority and focus, they're working to design and enhance the capabilities of school leaders and teachers. Corwin works to provide a long-term sustainable solution to improving student learning and increasing school-wide achievement through four areas. The first one being Foundation Series or Evidence to Action, impactful practices, evidence gathering tools to measure growth, and then Impact Coaching for the building of sustainability and capability for the school and the system as a whole. We've been working with them and there's been a wide range of support from the teachers and also administration. Once again, this funding is not from General Fund but from our School Quality Improvement Grant that's designed around leadership, leadership for administrators, teachers, teacher teams, and then also students in some capacity.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I've actually got a couple questions, Mr. President, if I may, from Harrington. The first one, the first question, I was a little unclear, Mr. Harrington, when I was looking through the agenda. So are these meant to be in-person professional development trainings or is this all virtual?
Initially, oh, I'm sorry.
And here's my answer because when I looked at sort of the cost associated with it, it seemed like that would be the cost that we would incur if it wasn't in-person. And traditionally moving it to a virtual, you know, there is, there is some cost savings moving it to a virtual sort of professional development. So that's why I was seeking clarification there.
Yes. So initially, when we worked through the contract, it was to be face-to-face because we did not know where we were going to be at as it relates to the reopening plan that we'll discuss later. In reaching out to our representative, we've talked about how can some things be adjusted. She talked to her superiors and they were willing to do some amendments to the contract. They talked about providing a discount to those buildings on day one of August and day one of September. The one thing that they were concerned about, not concerned, the one thing that they shared, they explained that their virtual and their face-to-face is almost comparable in cost because of the pandemic and some of the things that they have to do as it relates to platform license, getting individuals to run the sessions and internal staff helping with the virtual learning possibilities. But also, they talked about providing an additional cost savings of $6,000 off the contract. Now, this is just in relation to August and September. If we were to go virtual at that time, my question to the representative after that was, what if we stayed on virtual past that? And they said they would be willing to make additional amendments at that time. But right now, we would just be speaking for August through September or however the board decided we would reopen if it's face-to-face or if it is 100% virtual in those timeframes.
So follow up to that. So I guess I'm unclear. So to the dollar, so the prospective dollar amount that we'd be approving is predicated upon in-person. So because it sounds like you're talking about there would be sort of later amendments, but the dollar amounts we're being asked to approve today are not inclusive of those discounts?
So essentially, the contract that you have in hand today is based on face-to-face because we did not know, once again, what we were going to be reopening as, I guess you could say. However, in reaching out to individuals last night and then also today, they have the ability to make an amendment or they're open to submitting a new contract. So either way in which the board would like to act.
Yeah, I mean, from a contractual standpoint, you know, having heard that, you know, I would suggest that we hold up on approving that until we have a new contract in hand that has the more accurate pricing in place. Because the moment we approve it and you all send it back, you know, they're under no obligation to amend that contract later on. You know, so and I get that we've had conversations with them about it, but you know, just, you know, thinking to this, I mean, I guess employing a sort of a higher level of rigor as it relates to this, my suggestion, you know, would be perhaps we table this until you all have had adequate time to finish and conclude those contract negotiations.
Yes, you're correct. And once again, the contract was submitted prior to us knowing which route we were going to go in relation to face-to-face or virtual. So we can, we can make sure we go back to them and get that to you.
Okay, and then, and then I just had one more question, if I may, and that was, so you know, when we sort of think through the vendors that we employed to provide this type of training, what sort of outcome metrics, you know, are we going to hold them accountable for or hold ourselves accountable for? Because again, you think about, so I get that we, that this is a focus on parties. What do we expect to see change in our school from an outcome metric standpoint that we can point to that would suggest that these are dollars well spent?
I think for us, we're looking at the improvement plans of our buildings. Through that, whatever SMART goals they've identified and are working towards. So we're going to use achievement, of course. If they have SMART goals in relation to attendance, discipline, those are the different things that we're looking at. And once again, we always look at our different data resources throughout the district to help us identify if we're meeting set goals.
So how many years have we been, have we been working with Corwin Press?
We're going into year two.
Year two, okay. So is it too early to ask for data that would show movement described as a result of us employing them?
I don't want to say it's too early because we should be able to see something, as I said, through our improvement plans based on what these buildings are identifying as needs. So I would say that, I would say, look at the data with a grain of salt because we did get interrupted somewhat, but I still would say we could look at things as always. I think we always want to look at the data to see if we're moving in the right direction, and if we're not moving in the right direction, what do we need to do differently to address that?
Yeah, I would concur with all that, Mr. Harrington. Thanks for saying that. Yeah, so again, I think I'm gonna leave my suggestion on the table that we table approving the Corwin contracts until Mr. Harrington and company have had a chance to engage in further contractual conversation. That's my suggestion, and that's all I've got, Mr. President.
Thank you. And it sounds like you were referring to all of those items, so I'll leave it to the superintendent. Mr. Superintendent, do you want us to vote on that or would you like to withdraw those items from your recommendations?
Mr. President, for items 23.6 through 23.16, I will withdraw those from consideration.
Great, thank you. So the remainder of the business affairs items stand as presented. Mr. Alexander?
Yeah, I was gonna question Mr. Harrington as well. What is the timeframe that we have to get this information back to them once we make the amendments and get it back so we can get a contract back to vote on it in order to make sure that we can get the services they need to provide for our staff?
I'll be reaching back out to our representative tomorrow. She'll be in the process of working through the changes with pricing, and then we'll make sure we get that submitted to you no later than Thursday, Friday through the proper channels.
Okay, so it'll still be available and ready for our staff to get the training they need so they can move forward, correct?
Correct, as long as this is approved. Yes, sir.
Got it. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. McKittrick?
Thank you. Just point of information, can you tell me how much the School Quality Improvement Grant is? Because as these are listed, the Corin Press is $296,200. So I'm just curious how big that grant is. Thank you.
The School Quality Improvement Grant is a grant over four years, and it's in the excess of $9 million.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and Mr. Harrington, I'm sorry, I had one more. So I follow up to Ms. McKittrick's point. The reason why I was asking the question about the outcome metrics is because, you know, typically most grant-funded items, there's a component in that grant that does require some accountability around outcomes. So that's why I was sort of asking the question, you know, and not tonight, but I mean, but when we come back to this topic at the next board meeting, you know, it'd be interesting, you know, I find it informative to kind of understand sort of how, you know, Corin Press is gonna, you know, how in theory they would contribute to us achieving the metrics that are probably outlined in that, in that grant.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Ms. Autry?
Yes, thank you. My comment, question is regarding item 23.29, and this is for the baseball backdrop safety netting in the amount of $78,000 for the baseball field at Firestone. I guess I'm just, it's a comment, it's a question, because it looks like it's coming from our general fund. And with all just the comments and concerns we have surrounding sports, I'm just wondering about that because we made significant investments in the athletic facilities at Firestone as well as Ellett. So I'm just looking at that expense.
And if I just make a point of order also, Shamus Malik, Councilman Malik, and Scott Dodson that were on the agenda for tonight, that's what they were going to address. Councilman Malik has also said that he would rejoin if he was able to through the link. If you'd like to hear from him, we could try again, although this time it would not be presented by me. He would just be joining, but I'll leave that up to you and Ms. Autry. If I cut you off, I'm sorry, go ahead. Otherwise, did someone want to address Ms. Autry's comment?
Yes. So the problem with Dave Marshall Field at Firestone is that a lot of the foul balls have been hitting the houses that are nearby, going into yards and potentially hitting people as they're going past that facility. So that is what the two speakers are going to talk about tonight, and that's why we're putting the netting up. It's been a problem. And we've been looking at solutions to solve that problem, and putting up that netting will prevent those balls from hitting pedestrians and going in people's yards. I think we've had a car damage before. I think we've had a window broken before in a house, so this should take care of that situation.
Ms. Autry, is that good?
Well, it just seems pretty significant costs for a safety netting, and I'm not a baseball person, so I don't know. And again, just making the point that we have made significant investments towards the athletic facilities and programs there. So, but yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
So this is, Dr. Hall, if I could just sort of add to what Ms. Autry was getting at there. So I guess sort of the logical follow-on question that would be, you know, do we have similar nettings in place at other baseball facilities insofar as we have other baseball facilities?
I don't recall having that problem occur at any of our other facilities. You know, Ellet's is out of commission. That'll be put back once the old Ellet is, once the old Ellet is complete. The only other one, we did have a problem at Kent Middle School, Roswell Kent, when it was open. And that's a combined APS and city area where we had to put some actual fencing up to prevent balls from hitting homes on the south side of Kent, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Any other comments, questions, or discussion on the business affairs items?
So should we?
Did Mr. Akbar have a question on 23.8? 23.8, 23.28, I'm sorry.
23.28 was removed from this section to be discussed.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
So with that item removed, and the Corwin Press items removed as recommendations from the superintendent, the remaining business affairs items, and Dr. Akbar, did you have another question?
No, that was my question. Sorry, thank you.
No, thank you. All right, hearing and seeing none. Roll call, please. Mr. Altheater?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
I, but abstaining from item 23.2.
Thank you. Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Superintendent's report?
Mr. President, I wasn't sure if there was going to be a discussion on 23.28.
Dr. Akbar, did you want to add anything to that conversation for today?
Yes. I don't know how we want to vote. That's why I wanted to take that off and deal with it separately. But I wanted to talk about responsibility-centered discipline, and that being a part of a professional development that is being proposed for David Hill. Responsibility-centered discipline goes against everything that we are trying to do with equity and presenting a stronger, you know, process around the way we discipline our students. And we promote a better restorative justice practices. They, that, that, that method is actually, goes against that. And the only reason why I think it's important to pull it off and possibly either send it back for the staff who suggested it to reconsider, or to vote no on it, is because they're specifically looking to go into a program that's a multi-year program for certification. And I think that as we are building our equity protocol and all of those things, that that's totally going to go, that totally goes against it. And it will create a greater sense of the school to prison pipeline. And I want to make sure that we end that now, and not continue to perpetuate that. I think the other thing that we are mandated by the state to do PBIS. And so when you think about PBIS, we're also can't do PBIS well without social emotional learning. And I also believe that those restorative justice practices, when talking about restoring the harm that's done in any situation in the community, requires a full conversation than one that points the blame solely on the student.
I'd like to open it up. Yep, Mr. Harrington?
Go ahead, Mr. Alexander. I'll wait till you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I would like to hear from the staff, their rationale for it. And that way, maybe we can get a better understanding of why that was selected.
I can share from the standpoint what the buildings brought to the Office of School Improvement. Essentially, prior to COVID, they had the opportunity to attend the Innovative Schools Conference. And from their interactions with the presenter and the materials they received, they thought the professional development around discipline to assist students in responsible decision-making that impacts behavior would be beneficial. They thought it was a creative way to continue implementing and supporting the K through 12 social and emotional learning standards that includes self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and then responsible decision-making. As Dr. Akbar spoke about PBIS, when we look at PBIS, PACs, CHAMPs, and restorative justice within the district, I think our buildings, these two and including others, continue to work with our students to help them learn how to resolve conflict and come together, whether that's in pairs, triads, or small groups, to improve their relationships and then also improve themselves. So I think that's where the buildings were going. From the conversations that coordinators have had with principals and teachers and teacher leaders, they weren't looking at it from the standpoint of it being a blame, but more of how can we help our students understand how to be more self-aware, and then build their relationships with each other, and then also be responsible in intrinsically addressing issues as they come about within themselves, so they don't extend beyond and cause issue, if that makes sense.
Comments, questions?
Mr. President, I'd like the opportunity to have maybe some of the staff who are involved in that decision maybe come to a future board meeting and talk about how they came to that conclusion for recommending this particular program.
Thank you. Would you like to withdraw your recommendation at this time?
Well, it's already been pulled from the agenda, so I don't think, with no further action, it goes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yeah, the only thing I'll say is I think that as we move forward, that we need to be very cognizant on what we're doing when it comes to equity and comes to promoting more equitable outcomes for our students, as well as for our educational environment in our schools. And that requires some responsibility on all parties to take a look and assess and reflect on what they all contribute, which is why I personally believe that restorative justice is the way to go. And everyone talks about their responsibility, you know. That will mean that we will need to stop using certain vendors that we are currently using. That is the point blank only thing that I can say about that. And we need to be assessing all of what we do. And I think as we, Mr. Alexander and I are bringing forth our equity, our racial equity policy, which will include a racial equity protocol, which has questions and a matrix that will help us make decisions. Those are things that we need to be considering. And hopefully, as we talk about the Equity Committee, that part of their role and the Chief Diversity Officer's role as we roll that out, if that's passed, will be to make sure that our vendors that we select on all levels, which include professional development, meet those standards. And if they don't, then we won't use them, no matter who suggests them.
Thank you. So at this time, unless anyone would like to make a motion for approval, then we are going to let this item lie, and we'll wait for the superintendent to bring it back to the board with some more information from staff. Hearing and seeing no objection at this time, then we will move to the superintendent's report.
No report this evening. I have an item under new business. I'll use the time there, Mr. President.
Thank you. And just for President's report tonight, very brief, we have a lot to discuss this evening. We still have discussions on our restart, as well as our continuation of our levy discussion. And as we start to make decisions on what the return to school will look like this fall, and how we'll reconcile the end of our current levy cycle, we just want to continue to ask the public, let them know that we appreciate and continue to ask for their patience and understanding. There's a lot of questions that need to be answered, and our team is quite literally working around to ensure that you have all of those answers and the information that you need in order to make your own decisions. It gets thrown around a lot these days, but these are definitely unique times that call for unique answers. And above all else, some flexibility on all of our parts. So we have to continue to pull together as a community to make sure that we're taking care of each other, and most importantly, our kids. That's all I want to say tonight for our President's report. I'll have some more information for our board members offline about evaluations and things like that. But we do have a couple of big discussions to take place yet tonight. So with that, Treasurers' report?
I'll defer my points to the unfinished business and the levy discussion.
Thank you, sir. Committee reports, legal contracts, and board policy?
No report.
Thank you. Finance and capital management?
No report.
Thank you, sir. Instructional policy and student achievement?
Very quickly, one little thing. We have, we currently have two family resource centers, and two more are underway. There's a newly created one in conjunction with the Financial Powerment Center on Kenmore Boulevard, and that covers Southwest Akron. And there's another one being created in an elementary school covering Southeast Akron. But the specific details and dates haven't quite yet been finalized. But when the other ones are done, we will have four in the city of Akron. So thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Mansfield, I know that we have a couple of discussions yet to take place tonight. And so much of the difficult overshadows so much of the good. Did you want to say anything about the I Promise Village tour?
Wow, yeah, that seems like a year ago that you and I did that, but that was just this week, wasn't it? We had, Mr. Bravo and I had the opportunity to tour the I Promise Village. It is just an amazing collaboration. And Patrick, gee, I'm sorry, but it's escaping me what the name of the hotel chain is that purchased the building. Thank you. Graduate Hotels, thank you. And it's so nice to have something good and happy to talk about. I'm so blown away. And the building is beautiful. They've done an excellent job of renovating it. It has architectural features that you won't find anywhere in character like that. But the best part about it is, is the safety, the way they've prepared the building for families. They will be able to house 18 families, and they'll have two suites for emergencies. So flood, fire, domestic violence issues, things like that, available on an emergency basis. Most of the suites sleep up to six people, I believe. And some are two bedrooms, up to two bedrooms. Some of them have bunk beds. Kitchens are lovely. The furniture is all brand new. It's hotel quality, so it's durable. It's not, it's not going to break if you take a jump on it, you know. And then the common spaces are amazing. There's a lovely art room that paint can get on the floor and it won't matter. It could just be hosed down. A computer lab area for students to get tutoring help, as well as work together collaboratively if they need to, as well as a laundry area. Meals can be done together, as well as in your kitchen. So they'll work with their team through the I Promise School to have a plan, so that you can stay there as long as you need to, and together as a family. And that is one of the most important parts, because in shelters, often families, especially when you have sons that get above a certain age, you have to be separated. I know the access shelter allows you to stay together as a family as well, but they only have so many beds. So for our I Promise families, this is going to be another game changer. I know we say it a lot when it has to do with I Promise and the LeBron James Family Foundation. But this is just another example of when they put their minds to it, there's no, there's no end to the possibilities. And, you know, the family resource centers that Ms. McKittrick mentioned, the things that we're learning at the I Promise School, that's where that comes from, right? That's taking what we learn there and putting it out into the community with our United Way partners. And the goal is to eventually have those in all sectors of our clusters and elementary schools. So also up there, if any board members have questions, please make sure that you reach out. And I'm sure we can get someone to take you through. They just wanted to have us go through before families were there, so that they could have their privacy as well.
Yeah, and the first two families just moved in this last Friday. Each family, our staff and the LeBron James Family Foundation team works with the families to put them on a family plan. And it was really incredible. It was an incredible tour. And we didn't want to let tonight go without saying thank you to LeBron James, the LeBron James Family Foundation, Michelle Campbell, and our own staff for being part of that project. It was pretty amazing to see. Ms. Autry, and before Ms. Autry, before you say anything, it looks like we lost Dr. Akbar. So if you could hold one second while we try and reconnect him. Welcome back, Dr. Akbar. We waited for you, sir. We wouldn't move on without you. No man left behind here. All right. Ms. Autry, you had a question or a comment?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank the foundation and everyone involved with making this resource a reality for our students. My question is, how will placement in the residences be handled? Is that through the school, the foundation, or a combination of both?
Yeah, Ms. Mansfield, feel free to jump in here, too. Because this is primarily focused on housing first. For those most in need, they're working closely with our folks from Project Rise. So those that would qualify from Kenny Vento assistance. And there are more on that list, as you know, than space that's certainly available at the I Promise Village. I think there's about 10% of our student population actually qualifies as homeless. Homeless doesn't always mean necessarily without a home. It could be just housing insecure, staying with, moving around, staying in temporary locations. Ms. Mansfield, I don't know if you have anything to add, but that's the basic answer. Is there are still more students that qualify than what we have space for at this particular time in I Promise Village? But it starts with that, working with Project Rise and those folks that are on that list.
I'm sure that they could answer it much more eloquently. But I would say that because they work so closely with developing the family plan, and that family is such an important part of that network, they know what the needs are, and they're, they're working on things throughout their time in that shelter as well. And that would be, some are working on their GED, some are working for, on other home issues that they have that can, that have affected it. Some are just waiting for placement, right? They've applied for housing somewhere else, and they're on a waitlist, and they, they're doubled up until then. And this is so much better, because it's your own space, your own bed, and there's storage. They put all your things in storage. They keep them for them. So yeah, it's, it's that fantastic relationship that we have there at the building and throughout the network with the LeBron James Family Foundation. And I don't know if the superintendent has more, but that's what I remember from that day.
No, you, I mean absolutely right. For some of our students who attend the I Promise School, you know, they have resources there to help them with a lot of those basic needs issues that come up. And I know the foundation was very sensitive to some of the issues that they've heard for, with the folks who are working with the families, that housing can be a problem. And so the whole gist of this is to provide that resource so the kids have some stability when they're not in school.
Yeah, I think you said
Keith Littkey just, sorry, Patrick. Keith, our wonderful liaison with the foundation texted me as well. He said, right now, they do have 18 students that are experiencing homelessness right now. So it's a matter of getting them placed. So they're, they're very aware of what's going on with those families, fortunately. Sorry, Patrick, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I was just gonna add, and you probably saw in the, even the articles that came out, but they talked about this when we toured the facility as well, that they talked to LeBron's mom, Gloria, and talked to her about the challenges that she faced when she was raising LeBron, especially around homelessness. And so they, they focused a lot of their efforts and the supports that they'll provide the families that are staying in the I Promise Village around things that she experienced firsthand. So it was, it was really interesting to hear how they and our team sort of developed these supports together to support the families that are there. So really amazing.
So just to clarify, Project Rise is handling placements for the I Promise Village?
I don't know that they're handling placements, but they've been helping identify students that, that are in need. And I, that was pointed out to us on the tour, but I don't know their level, if they're actually picking the placements. I think that's more of a coordinated effort with the foundation and, and with our staff from the I Promise School.
And this is another question, because I did have this from someone. Is it designated for the I Promise students only?
Well, my recollection of the conversation is that's where, that's the first priority for students who attend the I Promise School when there are some issues, you know, to happen there. I know the foundation's also working with another group on, you know, another project, I think, over with maybe East Akron Community Development Corporation. I did read an article about that. So this is, like everyone said, this is a start and a resource for, you know, at least initially for the kids at the I Promise School and, you know, the foundation. It's, you know, that isn't definitely a school project. It's related to the I Promise program, but I think they have a bigger vision. A bigger vision around that. But it is primarily for I Promise families.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alexander?
Yes, I, I wanted to thank the foundation, LeBron James and the Family Foundation too, because, you know, I, I, I think a lot of times people don't understand unless they walk in those shoes. Some of these kids, the, the things they have to go through and the things their parents have to go through, a lot of times not of their own choice, but because of the cars may have been dealt wrong to them. And, and we, we as individuals who are working with the kids and working with the families, we should be obligated to make sure that these kids have an opportunity to get the best education. I am so happy to have LeBron James to be part of this community and come from Akron, because there are hardly any athletes across this country who make all the money that they make, who are, who is bringing money to the city of Akron for Akron Public Schools. And he didn't have to be here. He could have been in LA. He could have been in Miami doing this, but he chose his hometown to do this in. And I'm so appreciative, but the, the, because of the stuff that he's doing, a lot of these kids will have a better chance at life. And in the end, our society will do better because these kids have had an opportunity to be able to gain the knowledge, gain experience, gain education and become better individuals and contribute more to our society than maybe we will see as we grow older. And we may not even be here, somebody like me, because I'm at that age. But hey, for those who will be here, hey, he's doing something really great. So we need to be, be, be proud of what, what they're doing. So, and, and they're doing it for Akron Public School students. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Mansfield, for sharing with the rest of the board that. All right. At this time, we have our unfinished business. We do have a couple of discussions and just to begin with the levy discussion, for several weeks now, we've been discussing the financial necessity of placing a levy on the ballot in November. The board has been provided with the financial support that does indicate we're at the end of what has typically been a five to seven year levy cycle. Currently, we stand at eight years since the last levy appeared on the ballot. The board has been updated on the financial impacts and the potential future implications of COVID-19 and how that might impact the district's financials. We've also been updated on our current programs, including the ongoing transformation and the full implementation of our college and career academies model and the importance of maintaining momentum around that. And at our most recent board meeting, the board did approve resolutions of necessity. And information was submitted to the Summit County Fiscal Office so that they may certify the amounts based on those resolutions that the different villages would bring in. Tonight, for the, the purpose of our conversation is to, is to determine, excuse me, whether or not to place a levy on the ballot before the voters, and if so, in what amount. It's difficult to reconcile, I think, where we find ourselves right now to appreciate both where we are as a district financially, but also where we are as a community, a state and as a country, quite frankly, due to COVID-19. It's an absolute certainty that our district is in need of additional financial support if we're going to continue the transformational changes and the momentum here at Akron Public Schools that we've realized over the last couple of years. But we also can't ignore where we are. If the board chooses to place a levy on the ballot tonight, and if, and if it succeeds, the district will begin to collect that revenue in January of next year. If we choose not to place a levy on the ballot for November, we do still have opportunities in May and November of next year. And if that happens, it won't be, if it happens that we do not pass a levy tonight, it's probably important to state that it's almost, won't be so much a question of if we place a levy on the ballot next year, but when? And then we would be, in any event, if we placed a levy on the ballot next year, we would not begin to collect that revenue until 2022. So at this time, I would like to open it up for discussion by the board. First, I'd like to ask the superintendent and the treasurer, if they have any additional comments they'd like to make. And I'd like to remind the board, as you've already started, if you could line up in the chats with your comments or questions, and we'll keep it flowing. And if we have to come back around, we will do so. Mr. Treasurer?
Thanks, Mr. President. I just want to make sure as the discussion evolves tonight, that I have financial information ready, model ready on my screen, that I can respond to your questions, hopefully. As a reminder, we are now officially in the school year 2020, 2021, or fiscal year 21. And we were fortunate enough to quote unquote, balance the budget for last school year, last fiscal year. And that was primarily due to the closure of COVID from March, what, 15th on. Unfortunately, this year, we are looking around a 15 to a $16 million deficit. And as we all talked over the last few weeks and months, knowing that that deficit spend or that line 6.01 on the five-year forecast is the indication that you can either balance a budget or not, or deficit spend. So just to kind of kick off the conversation, knowing that there are significant headwinds to placing a levy on the ballot in November, we would look to recapture somewhere around that $15 million mark for the next school year. Obviously, how we open, whether virtual or in person, will make a large impact on that number.
Thank you. At this time, we'll, Mr. Superintendent, did you have anything you wanted to add?
You know, just that Mr. Pendleton and I have been looking at the numbers, you know, again, looking at the five-year forecast. And I think we are at a critical time, but, you know, I think we also have to balance our financial needs with our financial reality moving forward and this whole COVID pandemic and what impacts it's having on our community.
Thank you so much. At this time, we'll open it up for discussion to the board. Ms. McKittrick?
Thank you, Mr. President. While the levy, I'm sorry, while the district's need for the new money that a levy would provide is urgent, it must be reconciled with the community's ability to pay for it. At this time, with so much uncertainty surrounding the COVID-19 pandemic, particularly the volatility of worldwide, national, state and local economies, now does not seem an appropriate time to ask our community for more money. Again, do we need it? Absolutely. However, many of our families, many of our families are suffering due to conditions beyond their control. To ignore that and ask them for more money at this time seems callous. Hopefully, COVID will become better managed, perhaps even with a vaccine soon. Then we can reach out to our community and ask them to support the work that the district is doing by supporting a levy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKittrick. Would anyone else like to offer comments? Or prefer questions? Mr. Alexander and then Dr. Akbar?
Yeah, I, I agree with Ms. McKittrick. I, I, I don't want to see the district fall in any type of way. We need to finance, we definitely do. And we need to have a levy because we need the money. If, if we don't have the money, we're looking at possible, at least some things that maybe may have to get cut that we don't want to have cut. And we don't want it to affect our students in any way. But on the other hand, too, I, I do understand with COVID-19 and all the issues and problems that people are having, trying to support their own families at this point in time, it is tough. So maybe we may look at, maybe it has been discussed or maybe it would be discussed of possibly moving it back slightly instead of having it so soon. So we can hopefully allow people to get their finances together, the economy to, to roll back and then hopefully be able to take it out. So bring it out there so that people will be ready and we can hopefully pass a levy that's, that'll be needed for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Autry.
Thank you. So I appreciate the comments regarding being sensitive to the economic situations of our families. But I'd also like to say, as a member of the Finance Committee, I do want to thank Ryan because he's done a great job of educating us and informing us of what the realities are. We all know we need the levy. So I just want to say that regardless of when we put it on, I'm hoping that we will rally around the issue of education and what we need. But I can also say as well that there's no guarantee that next year we're going to be in a better position. You know, to, to take this on. And just a reminder as well, you know, if we wait until next year, those aren't funds that we're going to see until '22. So we're gonna be kind of working against the grain, you know, if we should decide to wait. I'm not sure what other issue is much more important than rallying around education. We've certainly shown our value. I would hope our families and the public see that and appreciate that and know that we need them. Whether it's this November, next May or, or next November, we need everyone to rally around this important priority of education and to continue to this district and provide the many things that we do have to offer. There's not too many entities who provide what we offer for almost 22,000 students in our community. It should be a priority for us all. And we might have to tighten our belts and just abide that. So I wanted to offer that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mansfield.
Thank you. I appreciate both, all the comments from my colleagues. This is, it's a tough decision right now. It's a we, we don't want to make cuts. We don't want to see any services that we provide to our families. We don't want to lose essential staff. We've been cutting for years. This is not, there's a reason that we've stretched it out this far, right? And there's a reason that we haven't been on the ballot again and again in the last several years. We've already made the cuts to trim fat and to consolidate the district and to right-size our buildings. As difficult as all of those decisions were, and they were difficult. We know that if we don't go for a levy, that there will be more difficult decisions to make and that hurts. But we also have to be mindful of what's going on around us right now. And this is not a normal, almost first week of August, last week of July. This is, there's nothing normal about what we're looking at. None of us could have foreseen this six months ago or a year ago that we'd be meeting virtually for one and not being able to, to have conversations together in person about this. Or the, the other decisions we have yet to, to do tonight. So I think that being mindful of the flux that our community is in, that it's probably prudent for us to wait, even though that means that there'll be pain in between. So I appreciate the comments of my colleagues. I think that Mr. Pendleton's done an excellent job of explaining to us what the, you know, what, what we have to face either way. And he'll continue to do so. So just wanted to weigh in on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, sorry, I was muted. Dr. Holland and then Dr. Akbar?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. So first, you know, I, I want to thank my colleagues for their very thoughtful comments on, on what is a very sort of complex issue. I certainly agree with the superintendent's point that this is a, a fine balancing act that we're being asked to sort of take on. And while I understand why there are reasons for us to delay the levy, I think it's important that we understand prior to making a decision to wait on a levy. I think it's important to understand what exactly we're talking about when we're talking about that, you know, I've heard, you know, the term, well, there's pain that, that's going to have to, you know, happen, you know? We're making, we're looking at making cuts. And so, you know, as a board member, you know, to make an informed decision about this, I think I would really need to have a better understanding as sort of what are we looking at in the short, medium, long term if we wait? Because again, this is a balancing act, right? And so we talk a lot about the importance of education for our children. So if we don't place a levy on the ballot, I think it's important to ask, what kinds of cuts are we looking at in the short term? And then if we wait until May or next November to put a levy on and it doesn't pass, then what are we looking at? You know, so I, I guess I'm, you know, and I'll defer to Mr. Pendleton again, you know, as, as, as the other co-chair of finance, Ms. Autry and I co-chair of finance, I think you're hearing us ask similar questions, which is, we want to understand what are the financial ramifications, both from a programming and staffing standpoint, you know, that will, of, of waiting? You know, and so, so I've got some more to ask and to say, but I, I think that's probably a good point to pause, to kind of seat the floor to Mr. Pendleton and to kind of sort of walk us through what that would look like.
Mr. Pendleton?
Take myself off of mute as well. So let's, let's start the response there at a high level and as board member questions come in, I can get more detailed. But I started my follow-up comments to the board president talking about line 6.01 on the forecast. I know everybody doesn't walk around with the forecast like I do. But that's essentially the fiscal health line item of the district. but that's essentially the fiscal health line item of the district. So whether we're adding to the cash balance or checkbook, or we're pulling away from it. And frankly, we've been able to manage the deficit spend over the last few years. It's been almost three years that we've predicted the deficit spend. Now, that's been between about $1 and $3 million or so, and we've been able to balance the budget those years. We're now looking this school year at around $15 to $16 million. So to Dr. Hall's point, starting at a high level, what needs to happen to stay ahead of this curve so that we don't almost go through a foregone conclusion that there will be deep programmatic cuts? Right? And so if we start with the values of Finance Committee about protecting the classroom, what do we need to do to protect ourselves? Now, I know that the discussion that we're going to have next on the reopening has a major impact on finances. And so let me answer that this way. From March 13th to the end of the school year, to include the reduced budget, lack of spending, lack of supplies, materials, and capital, and a little bit on the hourly institute employees that were not needed through the rest of the year, that were not covered by CARES Act and not covered by the Board of Education, we were still able to trim our general fund budget between $6 and $7 million as reported. Now, if we start this school year in a remote setting, we will most definitely spend less general fund money, but then we'll have to be active managers, and that could look like other budget reductions. Could that include staff? It's possible, yes. Will it include a refining of all the contracts and business operations? Yes. But as you can imagine, we're not going to be transporting students. We should not have nearly the utility bills on our business footprint. We would start there and then work through similar resolutions that the board has publicly discussed called essential staff. We would obviously wrap those supports around the needed programs, depending on the kind of reopening plan we would select. So that's a high-level answer, and specifically to go back to that answer, Dr. Hall, at about a $15 million deficit, and for us to stay ahead of that curve, we would need to either make budget reductions in the amount of $15 million and/or look and report on the spending, the less spending that is required from a virtual opening.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Pendleton, you know, and I guess, again, I'm, please understand that I am sensitive, you know, to the pain that this community is suffering because of COVID, you know, financially and otherwise, you know? And so at the same time, when times are tough, we ask our communities to prioritize what is the most important to them. I would suspect that our public education system, I would hope, I should say, that that would be near the top of their priority list. So that's why, again, while I'm flexible and while I am, you know, you know, sort of willing to go along with, you know, waiting to place a levy, you know, I wouldn't be doing my job as the Finance Co-Chair to ensure that the public didn't have a very good understanding of what could happen if we end up waiting to put it on in November. And so we're talking about a $15 million, you know, deficit. You know, I do think that we need to be able to talk about, you know, what the impact of the classroom would be. So, Mr. Pendleton, if you would, if you're wanting to state for the record that, you know, that we could wait a year to place the levy on the ballot, and we would see very minimal programmatic and very minimal staffing impact, you know, then that would go a long way towards swaying me that we can, that we can wait a bit longer to put a levy on the ballot. So I guess, you know, I sound like I'm teeing you up here, you know, or setting you up, and I'm not trying to do that, you know, I just want to make sure that we have a, that we have an informed board and an informed public so they understand what exactly it is that we're talking about from a consequence standpoint, you know? So again, let me pause there to get your response.
That sounds like you're, yeah, okay, I mean, yeah, that's setting me up. Obviously, I can't make those programmatic decisions. That is a collective discussion for the board and one that we would absolutely make sure that you are informed. The realities of COVID are the most unprecedented thing that I've ever seen in my 22-year, 20-year-plus career. It is almost impossible to forecast the needed expenses for the school year when we are debating the reopening plan next. That's an essential component of how that looks. That being said, $15 million is a substantial deficit. And so that would have more significant rounds of cuts than likely attrition afforded us over the past few years. I would answer it that way, just in, that would be my experience. But I also do welcome the conversation with the board and Finance Committee as we move forward after tonight's decision on the reopening.
I think we'll continue to point this out. I think it's worth noting as well, too, the compounding effect of those deficit spends year over year. Because on a five-year forecast, it's $15 million or $16 million next year, and it, but it's substantially higher in subsequent years. So I think that goes to the point, too, that, you know, any delay of a levy is simply just that, too. It's a delay. But it can't be a significant delay because, to your point, or a point that was made earlier, there's no guarantee that we're going to be in a better spot next year. There's no guarantee that even whether we're in a better spot or we're not, that a levy is going to pass next year. But we are at a critical moment, and I think the community needs to know, it's been pointed out earlier by both Ms. Autry and Dr. Hall so far, I think, and maybe others, was if we delay a levy this year, and I stay, and I opened this conversation with it, it's not so much a question of if next year, it's a question of when. And we're really going to need the community's support behind us because there's absolutely no denying that we're in a spot now where we need the levy support. But we also appreciate and understand where we are as a community. But, Dr. Hall, you're bringing up good questions, and you may have more follow-up. Go ahead if you do.
Yeah, and again, first, let me reiterate something I said earlier, and that is, again, very sensitive, you know, to what we're going through. But again, in times like these is when you ask a community to prioritize what is the most important to them. You know, and so, and I'm just, I'm wary of, you know, of voting tonight on this without having, you know, and I don't know that I, that I feel like I have enough information to be able to make an intelligent decision on whether or not we're a go or no-go in November. I mean, the other thing that Bear's mentioning is that a lot of this conversation, I think, makes an assumption. And that assumption is that if we waited, you know, to May or November of next year, that we would indeed pass a levy in May or November of next year. And so if we're negative $15 million this year and we don't pass it next year, then at that point, I think, quite obviously, I think we are looking at catastrophic decisions needing to be made. You know, so that's where I'm wary, and I think, you know, in the spirit of transparency as well, I think that, you know, you know, as a board, this is, this is, this is a public sort of discussion, right? We should, we should be able to engage in real talk. And I think, you know, the public needs to understand, you know, those of you who are listening, that, that, you know, while we're all very sensitive to sort of what we're going through in the community, we also don't want to short-change our students in the classroom. You know, and so that's where, so that's where I keep coming, saying, this is not a decision to be made lightly. And I guess I'm questioning whether or not, you know, it's prudent to make a decision now in the moment, whether or not we would put one on or not. I mean, you know, Mr. Pendleton, I guess, you know, you've done the filings. From a timing standpoint, you know, do you feel that it is imperative that we make a decision tonight? Or do you feel as though, you know, we would have an additional week, dare I say, to, you know, to sort of have some more conversation about this?
August 5th is the deadline, and I think you're, I'm not, I wasn't sure if you were waiting on me to respond or you to respond, but August 5th is the deadline by which we must certify this to the ballot. So definitely days, not weeks, Mr. Pendleton?
Well, I'd follow up on the priority comments and echo them as well. That being said, I don't want any board member or any member of our community or those around this discussion to feel like that there's more information needed. So obviously, we all take that very seriously, Dr. Hall, and if I could step out of my box a little bit, more information needed, and I'm interpreting just a little bit, just to have the conversation, is around the unprecedented scenario that we're facing. I do believe we know the financial scenario extremely well. We know that school funding in Ohio provides every school district with its own levy cycle. Ours happens to be in very well-proven about a six-year cycle. We know financially that we have reduced our operating footprint substantially over the last 15 years, and with our operating metrics and efficiency ratios up against anyone, let alone the larger districts around Ohio. And we also know from contractual bargaining unit, which are our largest contracts, we know exactly where we stand financially. That being said, not having the, all the information on COVID, minus the reopening that I think is next to come, and its impact, Dr. Hall, on that specifically, could have multiple seven-figure impacts to the budget. That being said, to President Bravo's comments, August 5th is the deadline. Obviously, we would need to give ourselves a couple of days to hand-deliver and certify to the county into the Board of Elections. If there's other financials that we haven't provided related to the reopening plan, we should certainly do that. And we can do that in common work. We can do that in another special board meeting. We can do that however we want to do that.
Yeah, thank you for that. Let me clarify, I guess, my comment when I say more information. So I know the last board meeting, I know a question that I raised was, you know, we're talking about the financial impact of passing levy during this difficult time. I know a question I asked was, well, what was the impact going to be predicated upon various housing values? So the owner of a $75,000 house, or $100,000, or $50,000, you know? And so I know that you mentioned that you were going to work on that. And then the other part of that, too, is that, you know, you mentioned the three different amounts we talked about, right? So, you know, if we wait to put a levy on the ballot, my assumption is that we would be asking for a higher amount. So in some respects, one could argue that we are, you know, to use a colloquial term, kicking the can down the road, you know, just a bit, you know, assuming that we'll be able to pick up that can later on. So again, you know, while I can be swayed, you know, to wait, I just, I want to make sure that I understand, that I, that, speaking for me, obviously, that I understand what the costs, you know, are, you know, with respect to those varying levy amounts to our taxpayers here. And then also to ask you one more question, that is, I guess, my assumption was that if we wait to put the levy on, that we need, that we'll be asking for a higher amount. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the two questions I want to answer is the monthly amount coming from the tax certifications, and then theoretically, technically speaking, if we don't go on this year, we need to ask for a higher millage amount next year. So the tax certifications on, let's say, a 7.9 mil levy is less than $15 a month on the average, average value of an Akron home, which is, I believe, $68,000 and change, is what we did the estimates on, and that represents the average, so it's less than $15 a month. The other question is, if there are not reductions made, either from spending less in a virtual reopening or budget reductions, the textbook answer says that we need to ask north of 10 mils, maybe as high as 13 to 15 mils. If we are able to trim the budget, either through virtual reopening and/or budget reductions, we can get it back down to the millage amounts that we've been looking at. But that goes back to the number of can we balance the budget for next year? A large determining factor of that is our reopening plan.
So thank you for that. Yeah, I appreciate your transparency. So for me, that's, you've kind of distilled it down to what, for me, is the crux of the issue, which is, we can either go now in November and ask for a lower millage amount of 7, 9, 6, 9, 7, 9, or 8, 9, or we can wait, you know, till next year and hope that we're able to trim the budget sufficiently. And if we do, we're still probably asking north of 9 mils, maybe 10. And if we're not, we could be asking for as much as 13 to 15 mils, which, you know, you know, my thought and my assumption, Mr. Pendleton, would be that, you know, that the higher the millage amount, the less likely it is to pass. You know, so that's where I come back to my original point, which is, if we wait, I'm just wary of being in next May or November, asking for north of 9, north of 10, 12, 13, 14 mils, and having the public really balk at that, you know, as well. So, and now we're in a situation where, when we could have went at 8.9 or 7.9, and we didn't, we're now going at a higher number, and we may not pass that. So that's where, you know, I think at days, and you know, I think we all have to, I think you'd agree, we have to do the best we can with the information we have right now. And I, it just feels like we're leaving an awful lot, you know, to chance, or to fate, or to circumstance by waiting to next year. And so, again, so, and again, I'm saying all this because, you know, I want to make sure that my colleagues and you all, you know, understand how conflicted I am about this. Because on one hand, I, Ms. McKittrick, made a very eloquent sort of plea for why we should wait. And so I want to make sure I'm respectful of her position as well, you know? And so, and fully acknowledge the weight of what she said. I'm just having, I'm struggling to balance that up against, to your point, Mr. Pendleton, the multitude of uncertainty that we're looking at in the future. And so there's a lot of assumptions of things that would have to happen in next year. And I just really, it really, I find it just a bit scary to be, you know, to be candid with you. So, and so I think, having said that, I don't have any more questions to ask at this time. And, you know, so I'll see the floor back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I think for what it's worth, Dr. Hall, you are kind of putting on display exactly the struggle that we're all facing right now, right? Which is whether or not we, as a community, we can get behind this. So I, you know, great questions, great discussion. Dr. Akbar?
Yes, just to extend on what Dr. Hall said, and I just like to bracket it in this way that we're living in what's been called unprecedented and uncertain. And with uncertainty and unprecedented, you have to look at things potentially a little differently than you normally would. And so considering all of the conflict, the back and forth that Dr. Hall so eloquently outlaid, I think we all have gone through, I think we also have to bracket it with, if we go this year, we're still going to potentially need to go again in a few years after that. And so none of it is an easy conversation. But I think that what I want to share with everyone, based off where I stand and where my position, I've become resolved, and for now, is that basically our district is in need of your support. It's in need of everyone's support in order to create a school system that we want. And we live in unprecedented, uncertain times. While there may be a cloud that many people see today, the hope is that we come out of this cloud where there's many days and many years of sunshine. And the way we do that is by coming together as a community, and we support and rally behind our schools, like Ms. Autry said. We have a bold challenge ahead. We have a bold challenge ahead. And with that bold challenge, we also recognize that we are in essential service to the city of Akron and to our community. Our schools are pivotal in what we do and what we provide to the maintenance of our community. And so we have seen that on display with this pandemic. We've seen it on display throughout the summer with the mil program. And I think that we continue to show that we can be innovative. You know, this future that we are embarking upon, even though we didn't necessarily ask to have these same challenges, are going to challenge us to be bold and innovative. And I think that we have that opportunity. The future for APS is definitely bright. And we need everyone's support to move to that next level. And with that being said, I have received calls and emails on both sides of the spectrum of putting a levy on in November or not putting the levy on and being respectful for the struggle that people have. And I want to say that I've heard each and every one of you. And I've made the decision that in this difficult time that everyone's going through and the uncertainty that we all have just about the upcoming school year and about the pandemic, that I, I've resolved that this is not the right time to move forward with a levy. But saying that, I want to echo our President Bravo's comments about saying that it's not a question of if we go next year, it's when. And I would like for us to, as a board, to make that decision or proclamation known to the public soon, so that we can begin that process of educating people about the need. The need is clear, in my opinion, and the service and what we provide as a district is also clear. And so we need support from our whole community to be able to continue to do that and take that to the next level.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar, and I've kind of, Mr. Alexander.
Yeah, I, I just have a question, and it's for Mr. Pendleton, because he, he would probably be the one to be able to answer this question most. We, we know that we have, our cycle is normally about six years for Akron Public Schools, but we have waited eight years to go back to the people, trying to be respectful and trying to be considerate and not go back to them so soon. But if we, and I know if we, if we waited, we talk about waiting to next year. If we wait to next year, the millage is going to be higher. My question is, if we go back, go next year, maybe around May or so, and we go for a smaller a millage than what we were thinking, and then maybe possibly go back in six years to ask versus waiting eight more years, would that help us any at all?
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. So I want to clarify maybe one of those comments from the earlier conversation we had about the millage amounts in next year. If no budget reductions, either organically or actively managed by the board, meaning the reopening plan will dictate some of our expenses and whether or not we make some reductions on top of that to balance the budget. If we made none of those reductions, the millage would most definitely have to be higher. Now, just because we are losing another calendar year and/or tax year, the millage may have to be higher even with some of those. But we need to evaluate that as we get into the reopening plan. Unfortunately, one of the reasons that we were able to extend from six to eight years and really extend this levy cycle was that the board was actively managing our footprint and closed a number of buildings. And those resonated long before our last levy attempt. It's really taken place over the last 15 years. And when I say active management, I, what I really mean to do is to say to the superintendent and the board, those were, those were well done. Those were well done because they were done in a time where it was done through attrition. So as folks retired, we weren't making layoffs during those times and those reduced footprints. So those, what I say, the board was actively managing that situation. Unfortunately, this is different. This is different because we are largely at capacity in all of our buildings. I don't mean 100% capacity, but a good academic study says about an 85% capacity utilization of our buildings is an efficient use of them. We have some that are larger than that and some that are just slightly lower than that, but we've really worked hard at that. I don't know that the next levy attempt can last us six years. Now, the, the current modeling says three to four, with higher, higher millages could last us five. So I do believe how we respond to the reopening. Again, all of the, the typical models are really distorted when it comes to COVID and the implications that districts are going through. And it's very difficult to say this one will last us six years because the typical models say that it won't.
Thank you, and I think we, from everyone, and I, I just want to add my own two cents. And I want to pick up where Dr. Akbar was speaking. If it's the board's decision tonight to not place a levy on the ballot, then I think I would take it one step further and say, let this then be the beginning of our campaign for next year. Because I think it's been made clear, not just tonight, but over the last several weeks, that the need for the financial support is there. And, you know, I appreciate certainly all of the questions and the discussion tonight. And, and I can understand where Dr. Hall and Ms. Autry from the Finance Committee, from their perspective, is really coming from, especially having chaired that committee for a few years and you see what, what, what appears to be in front of you a cliff. And there's only so far that you can push that off. And we're really, if we make the decision not to go tonight, then we're, then we're pushing it off for sure. And, or as Dr. Hall said, we're kicking the can in hopes that we'll be able to pick it up again later. And certainly, that is the hope. There's no guarantee, as has been pointed out tonight. But if we, if our decision tonight is to not put a levy on the ballot, then I think the community needs to know that this is, at least unofficially in my terms, the launch of our campaign for next year, because we can't afford to go beyond next year without putting it in front of the voters. It is a reality at this point that the financial support is needed. With that, I think we've, we, we've heard from everyone. So the question tonight, there are three resolutions in front of you, each representing the different millage amounts that were certified by the semi-company fiscal officer in terms of the amounts that those millages would produce. If you make a motion for any one of those resolutions, then we will take a vote. If you make no motion on any of those resolutions, then there will be no vote and the matter will die for lack of a motion. So at this point, I'd like to open it up and allow anyone that would like to make a motion on a levy issue to make one. And if there's not one, then we will move on.
Mr. President, I actually would like to make a different motion, not on those three resolutions, but just, I would like to move that this board discontinue consideration for levy for the ballot of November 2020 and instead move forward with discussing and considering a levy on the ballot in 2021, either in May or November.
All right, there's a, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Can we clarify, I'm sorry, point and clarification. Can we, can we restate the, the motion that's, that's being presented? I have to make sure that I followed the language. So we're, we're going to?
Discontinue discussions on a levy issue for the November 2020 ballot and to continue discussions on a levy issue for the 2021 ballot. And it's not clarified whether it would be May or November. I think that's up for further discussion.
So, so before we go further on that, I mean, so that's, and now, and that's, that's sort of, I guess, that's similar to saying, we're basically voting to not put a levy on the ballot in November. I mean, that's, I mean, like, that's, I mean, I know that we phrase it a little bit differently, but that's, I have to make sure that, that, that's, well, okay.
Correct, correct. A motion was not needed. You, you could have not voted on or, or had any movement on the three resolutions that are in front of you tonight. Dr. Akbar wanted to make a motion to just end the discussion with no consideration of those resolutions.
And I seconded.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments, question, or discussions recognizing a motion and a second on the floor?
Yeah, I just have a comment, you know? So I, I recognize that we're up against it from a timing standpoint, but I did ask a question earlier, I just want to make sure that I had an, that make sure that I heard the answer on, which was, so hypothetically, if we wanted to take more time to talk about this, there is more time, Mr. Pendleton? We could take a few more days, there, as long as a week?
That is correct. We have one additional resolution to place a levy initiative on the November ballot with the appropriate timing prior to August 5th.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Ms. Autry?
Yes, so I, again, I just wanted to reiterate that I do understand and reiterate the importance of the need for a levy. And I know we're talking about financials and money. The other point I just wanted to mention and a concern is that as we move forward, you know, any cuts that we're going to need to make, you know, I am concerned about some of our schools that are already having challenges. And I just want to make sure that cuts that are made aren't disproportionately affecting, you know, those buildings that are already having some challenges. So that is also just one of my concerns with not reinforcing our financials at this time with a levy.
Thank you.
Yeah, and this is Dr. Hall, I just had one more comment on this too. I mean, I know Mr. Pendleton said several times during the, our Q and A, you know, that, that there were, that there was more that we would talk about from a finance standpoint in relation to the reopening plan. So I'm wondering, does it make sense to discuss the reopening plan and then come back to this, this, this motion?
Dr. Akbar, we'll let you speak up.
I mean, the motion's on the table. I don't, the reason why I put the motion out there was I don't think that, regardless of what we decide with the reopening, my thought is that we need to, based off what I'm hearing, is that it's likely that we won't move forward with the November 2020 ballot, but we need to begin moving forward quickly, but then also steadily for putting the levy on the ballot in 2021. And so that's why I made the motion in the way that I did. Instead of letting the resolutions just simply die, it says that we as a board still are considering a levy and continuing forward in that fashion, just not in November of 2020, but specifically definitely in 2021.
Thank you. Ms. Mansfield?
I just want to clarify and make sure that it's understood that in no way would whether we go remote or not have a financial reason. We're not, we would not consider going online just to save some money. I just want to say that out loud. I'm sure that, I know that's not in any way anyone's intention in what they're saying, but I don't want it to be misconstrued and have somebody draw that conclusion. Anything that we do about the reopening is all about student and staff safety. It has, if, if there's a financial savings in it, that would be completely secondary to, to safety. I just need to say that out loud, just to clarify. Again, no one has said that. I just, and I'm not accusing anyone of saying that. I just want to make sure it's not misconstrued somehow in the translation.
Well, I would, I would, yeah, I would have to ask, man. Mr. President, the reason why I ask, yeah, the reason why I ask my question, Dr. Akbar, is because, you know, because, you know, I think my position on this is that, I think, I think it's probably become more evident in the last few minutes. But, you know, I am in favor of placing a ballot on, placing a levy on the ballot in November. And so, but having said that, the way that, that Dr. Akbar's motion is phrased, I would not, a no vote on that would, would indicate that I'm not open to talking about a levy next year. And so that wouldn't be the case. So that's what, that's why, that's why I was sort of commenting on that about the phraseology. You know, so, so I'd be, so if, if this board, you know, decides tonight that we're not going to move forward with putting a levy on the ballot in November, then that's fine. And of course, I would be supportive of having the conversation again for next May or November. But again, I, again, just where the, you know, the way that the motion is phrased, it would seem to indicate that a no vote on that would seem, would be me saying, no, I'm not willing to have that conversation in May. I'm sorry, for next year.
Thank you. And as you pointed out, I don't see any other folks lined up for questions or comments. A yes vote would mean we would end the discussion for putting a ballot, a levy on the ballot for the November 2020 election cycle. But to Dr. Hall's point, it does not necessarily mean that you would not entertain, a no vote would not mean that you would not entertain discussion for a 2021 ballot initiative for a levy. Are there any final comments, questions, or discussion?
Yeah, so for clarity's sake, you know, you know, I guess, I guess I would offer a, a potential competing motion, which would be, you know, can we, can we just make it, you know, can we make it simplistic and just, and just vote thumbs up or thumbs down on putting a levy on the ballot in November?
Dr. Akbar, would you be willing to amend your motion to one that would end the discussion for the November 2020 election cycle only?
Well, honestly, if, if no one puts a motion up for one of those resolutions, then that ends the discussion for this month. So if you want to make it simple, my, we could make, we could take that, oh, we can take that part out of the discussion altogether and just move to consider a levy for May or, or November of 2021.
So I know that we're in some procedural kind of, the bushes here a little bit. So, so, you know, I, I know that, that the motion left in the agenda, you know, was on those three levy amounts, right? So Ryan, you would need a motion and one that would pass in order to move forward with that for November. Is that correct?
That is correct. Inaction would be the same thing as taking some of the commentary about discontinuing the conversation. So inaction on any one of those resolutions or a motion from board in second to further the resolution to proceed would also do the same thing.
Gotcha, gotcha. So, so again, I mean, my, my preference would be that, that we, for, for clarity's sake, that we partition the motion in two pieces. One, you know, to end discussion on November, or I'm sorry, to put a levy on the ballot in November. And two, you know, to, to, to begin conversation about a levy next year. I mean, that's my preference. And if it's easier for me, for, for me just to make the motion for the three levy amounts, I'm happy to do that if that makes this more simplistic and you all can vote thumbs up or thumbs down on it. And then we can move on to Dr. Akbar's motion.
Well, to your point, we're getting into a little, we're getting into the procedural weeds here. We already have a motion and a second on the table. So we either need to call the question and vote on that or to ask Dr. Akbar to withdraw his motion and let no one make a motion, either no one make a motion on the three resolutions or someone make a motion and we vote them up or vote them down.
Yeah, I'd like to.
I made my, my notion, my motion as originally stated.
All right, so at this point, let's call the question or?
Patrick, can you, I'm sorry, Patrick, can you clarify for, for me one more time what a yes, a yes vote entails?
So a yes vote would be to end the discussion for the 2020 November election cycle. So we would end the discussion and we would not put a resolution forward to the board for a levy for November 2020. But we would discuss putting one on the ballot for 2021. A no vote would mean that we would continue the discussion for this year. A no vote would mean that we would continue the discussion for this year, which then, of course, would invalidate the second half of that motion. So, but I would also say, to your point, Dr. Hall, a no vote would not necessarily mean that you're not in favor of continuing the discussion for the 2021 May or November election cycles.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate that.
Thank you. So we're going to call the question at this point. Roll call, please.
Ms. Autry?
No.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
No.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you so much. Motion passes, so that ends the discussion for a levy on the November ballot. But the public should, I suppose, take notice of the conversation tonight. It was very thoughtful. It was a lot of good discussion from our board members, a lot of good questions asked and opinions proffered. But I would suggest again that let this be sort of the unofficial launch of our 2021 levy campaign. As you've heard tonight and over the last several weeks, the financial need for this district is real, but we also understand where we are in terms of a district and the community, and again, the state and the country, for that matter, in terms of what COVID-19 has brought to us. And we're also at the end of a levy cycle in general. So this is not just COVID-19 related. As you've heard tonight, our levy cycle is typically six years. We've stretched it to eight, so the need is very real. But when we stretched it to eight, no one could have foreseen, as was pointed out tonight, that we'd also be facing the financial realities of a pandemic. And if that discussion wasn't difficult enough.